Bless you.
Councilman Contras, Councilman Gillian, Councilman Rennenbaum, Councilman Mayor Protim, Leah Young, we have Councilman Nathan Krummel absent.
Thank you. Would you please rise? Join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to approve the city council minutes of June 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
That, Sean, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Thank you. At this time, we're going to swear in our new municipal judge.
We got to appoint him first?
Okay, we might need to appoint him first.
Do we have citizen comments?
We have Councilman Gilliland and I met with several candidates this past couple of weeks, and we have brought to the council tonight Josh Norrell as municipal judge. So could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Josh Norrell as the municipal judge for the City of Willow Park. I know it's not in here, but did we discuss two-year contract? Was that part of this?
It's a two-year agreement.
Two-year.
Okay, two-year agreement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this time, we will swear Judge Norrell in. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Thank you. Judge, would you come up, please?
Sir. May I watch you, will me?
Absolutely.
Get that out of me. Hi, I'm Crystal Monae.
Crystal Monae.
Pleased to meet you.
Pleased to meet you.
Okay, just raise your right hand for me. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas. Repeat, I'm sorry.
That's okay. In the name and by the authority of Texas.
I, Josh Norrell.
Yes, ma'am. I, Josh Norrell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of Willow Park Municipal Judge.
The duties of the office of the municipal park, excuse me, Willow Park Municipal Judge.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutions and the laws of the United States.
The constitutions and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Josh.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Nice meeting you.
Mayor, do we have any citizen comments?
I'm sorry?
Citizen comments?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
This is an agenda item?
Yeah.
Speaking, and it happens to be right now.
Um, hold on.
And then I'll pass this over to the state. You sit over there. You're on the roster for us. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Thanks, Judge.
Counsel, we're going to move number five up. And we've got somebody that's going to drive back to El Paso or something. We have consideration in action on a final plat of blocks two, three, and four, quarter addition, being 21.752 acres. JM Forman Survey Abstract Number 471, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Betty.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is a final plat for a three-block subdivision. The property is zone commercial and is in the I-20 overlay district. This plat includes not only the three blocks, but also the extension of Bankhead Highway, which is a 60-foot collector street to the west, Eagle Drive, and also Ryzer Road, which will be the two north-south streets in the subdivision and reflect on the plat. And those are also 60-foot rights of way. The subdivision will be served with City of Willow Park Water and Sanitary Sewer, and also fire hydrants will be installed in accordance with ISO regulations. There is a portion of Block Three, Lot One, the most western lot. It is within the floodway, and there has been a FEMA study completed and submitted, and there is a loaner issued on the property. This comes forth with a favorable recommendation from staff and the Planning and zoning commission. You do have in your packet the plat, application in the final plat, developers engineer, which Jacob Martin is here, if you have any questions or if I can answer any of the staff report.
Uh, Bankhead Highway.
Yes.
How big is it?
60-foot a collector.
Okay.
And that's, if you remember, that's kind of what we've been acquiring along to the east, the additional 10 foot, so we can ultimately have a collector street.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions for Betty? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat of blocks two, three, four, quarter addition, being 21.752 acres. JM Frome Survey Abstract Number 471, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Item number, item number three, consider an action regarding a contractual commitment for lease and installation of Christmas lighting and decorations. We have a public comment from Mrs. Hannah.
KJ Hannah, Meadow Place Estates, Willow Park. Counsel, mayor, and neighbors, this agenda item is deserving of an admonition from Ebenezer Scrooge. Bah, it's humbug. It's a poor excuse for picking a man's pocket every 25th of December. $30,000 on secular Christmas lights? In a year where the city has had the necessary but onerous financial burdens of a new drainage project, and a new Fort Worth water delivery system, and a new sewer treatment plant, and street repair, and a new quarter of a million-dollar public park, and several new police and firemen, some of whom are not in the budget yet, and even a new $100 backflow certification test, and to that, and the attack on our national economy and liberty, crushing inflation, rising gas prices, and the vivid prediction of a deep and long-lasting recession, and it ill behooves any elected official to spend one single farthing on Christmas lights. Go to the merchants of Willow Park with the spirit of Christmas present and this buffet list of Christmas decorations, and collect sponsorships from their marketing budget. Have a neighborhood contest on the best residential neighborhood and commercial neighborhood Christmas decorations. Easily 80% of the houses in Meadow Place Estates have fabulous array of Christmas decorations. We toss the gauntlet of the spirit of Christmas future. Evoke the spirit of Christmas past, and ask our Willow Park churches to put it on a live nativity scene, or a citywide ecumenical Christmas Eve service. Ask them to bring together the neighbors of Willow Park to celebrate the birth of the risen Christ. I suggest we celebrate Christmas with a string of mistletoe hanging above the head of every occupant in our Willow Park police cars and fire trucks, and spend the $30,000 on keeping them safe. God bless them, everyone. Instead of spending $30,000 on secular Christmas lights, let's follow Scrooge's final epiphany. I will honor Christmas in my heart and to try to keep it all new. Thank you.
Thank you. This came up this last meeting, and we've been discussing this for some time. Willow Park, in the last year, we've done things, done several things to save money. I think we've been very prudent and frugal with our budget, our expenses, and our sales taxes increased. Willow Park is the second-largest city in Parker County. And to me, the citizens, the children, the businesses deserve some type of Christmas decoration in this city. We've, in the last three or four years, we've, we've cut expenses significantly in a lot of places. Our revenue is up, and I still believe this is something very deserving of the citizens and the businesses in our city. So we can have a discussion.
I would like to, I apologize that I missed the last meeting, but I was able to watch the discussion, thanks to the fact that we record everything. I, this, I feel like this is kind of in the area of parks and the recreation and some of that stuff, so I do feel bad that I was not here for the discussion. I will also say, I spoke with Nathan after the city council meeting, and again today, since he couldn't be here. So I am kind of trying to champion a little bit of his beliefs as well, because they align with mine. I absolutely believe we need to improve how we've done our Christmas light decorations at City Hall. We're asking our staff to basically work with substandard electrical systems to try to do something. So I do think that we need to find some of it. I think it's necessary that we do something. Some of my concerns are, we're not exactly sure what we're going to be doing with all of the property that we're talking about as far as park improvements, long-term use of areas. So I don't want to put a whole lot of money into upgrading electrical systems that we might be changing things within even a year. I would, I've spoken with Tony Fisher, who was working as our Parks Department, as we try to develop that. And we have a laundry list of things that we want to do with some of the parks funding, whether that's the CO, whether it's in the budget for next year. We've been preparing a list of things that, these are our, this is kind of our wish list that we hope to take to Parks Board and Council and say, let's prioritize what we're going to do, whether it's concrete sidewalks, additional ones in our parks, pavilions, or even electricity for Christmas lighting or other uses. To sum that all up, what my belief is, is that we should absolutely do something. My belief is that we should set a budget that we think is reasonable, and then allow our staff to work with that. Not necessarily tell them what light goes on what, but just say what we think is a reasonable budget for the City of Willow Park to have. Personally, I think it's about $10,000 to $12,000 per year, with something like along the lines of a reasonable 5K to upgrade electrical systems, but know that we need to have something in place to know where we're putting that, because we don't want to be ripping it up next year, because we're doing something, putting a pavilion in or something like that. So that, before I make a motion, that's just my discussion of where I've been talking with Nate about, let's just kind of set what we think is reasonable to include within our budget, and then let staff figure out how to get the best, whether it's this particular contractor that requires this right now, or maybe there's somebody cheaper that we could get even more lighting for that amount of money. But let our staff continue to work on this issue, knowing, but not kind of micromanage it.
But it's something, if we don't, July, was that July? We needed to have something done, but July.
For this contractor. There are other contractors that you can contact as late as October.
Yeah, but to my thinking, I think somebody made the point that we can buy lights and have a contract to put them up. And the, and the subject came up of piecemealing. We don't, Willow Park is a piecemeal thing for 30 years.
I think there's other quality contractors that buy the lights, store the lights, do a contract, that potentially don't require us to decide in June and July.
Are you, are you, are you familiar with those, Tony?
I've gotten only two, and those were ones who I contacted prior. So the one that I recommended is the one that I would, that I've used, so that I go.
And that's who Alito uses?
Pardon?
And that's who Alito uses?
Correct. Yeah, they had their references, and they're good, strong references in this package, so.
So, last council meeting, we approved this 20K for electrical improvements.
That's for the, that was for the park, the power to the park.
What are you saying? We need to cancel, or we need to do something to cancel that?
That's been approved, so I understand that. I would like to see staff use as little of that as possible, based on what we decide for the annual contract, if that makes sense. So if we take an annual.
So not to exceed, you're saying?
What, if we're saying now out of the yearly budget, we're going to do, because we're looking at 30, 30K that we wouldn't be allocating, that's what we would have to do tonight, well, if we set that number lower tonight, they may not need that whole 20K that we've already approved. Then they would say, well, we now aren't going to be doing lights to all the trees, or, so that's why it is. They'll, they'll use good judgment to say, we only need 5,000 to get, well, this, this building needs, you know, additional blocks and everything in order to do the lights here properly. So I believe, and Tony, you can jump in anytime, but having talked to Tony, she is already meeting with an electrician this week to go over, and probably less than 20K is what anything would take, but certainly if we scale back, it will be less than 20K.
So we'll tell, we'll, what I'm hearing you say is, we leave the electrical alone, and then we work with someone that might could do it less. Is that what we're saying?
I would have to look for someone else to do it less. I mean, other than.
Or do less of what this contractor is offering, not do everything that's in this package.
I did put in the minutes after listening to it that, that it would come from the bond series 2022, or the reserve funds, but not to exceed 20K. So that's, after all of the motions and amendments, that's what I got.
Okay.
So that's what got disapproved.
For the electrical, we're set.
Right, that's just for the electrical, correct.
So what is your recommendation? That we cap a budget for staff and let your staff just handle it?
Yes. What I would be recommending is saying, since we're doing our budgeting in July and August, we're basically creating a line item now.
Right.
For that budget, and say, we pick that number tonight, so that she can go forth and get a contract in place if needed. So, and we know what that is. All I'm saying that's different than, that's what we're going to do anyway, is that I think a smaller amount, 12K, would be appropriate to save for our annual, and we can add to it each year. That, if that's what we've signed on for three years to get a better discount, we can add other sections as needed.
And that's what, that's what I abhor, that we're going to piecemeal this thing. We're going to start something, and then start something, and then add to it. That's what Willow Park has done for 20 years, 30 years.
Well, looking at what we've proposed, I don't think we need to light the bathroom. I mean, I, that's where I'm saying, I don't need to micromanage and tell them, but I can cut those amounts from it. I don't need.
And I think it was 23, didn't we? We were talking today, it was 23,000, it wasn't 30,000? Yeah, sure.
I put the, the public safety building separate, that was 3925, because the police department, or the fire department does actually do the lights on that building. So they do red, white, and blue, if you want them to match with the lights that are going to be on City Hall or around the restroom. We could save almost the 4,000 there if you still have the fire department do their own lights.
They can do their own lights.
So that would take us down a little bit. We were talking about the total here for 30,910 would be for everything that's listed on here with the public safety building. Without, well, we're going to save the 3925, so 4,000 off, that's about 26.
But that's with electrical, that's with everything?
No, that's not electrical. That is with the lights funded.
That's the one-year contract.
Yes, that is the one-year contract.
What we pay, we don't need anything else.
That's one-year contract.
Yes, that's, that's a one-year contract, yes.
Okay.
So if we do a three-year contract, then with the fire station was 27,490, and so, again, take almost 4,000 off of that, so.
Make 23.
For three, please.
For each year, for three years.
So that'd be 60.
So you could, we could do, if I'm looking at this right, this is for the one-year lease pricing, right?
Yes.
So you could do City Hall and Memorial Park, essentially this entire area.
Yes.
And not do the PSV, and not do Cross Timbers Park.
Right.
And you're all in for 23,000 on a one-year deal.
Yes, and there'll be two trees that are up at the public safety building, that they'll wrap, two of the big, two big trees in the front, they'll wrap those. So you'll have, you'll see the continuity of that, having wrapped trees as well as the park here, so.
Okay.
So do you have a chance to discuss this with the other Parks Board members?
No, so we have not, you know, since I can't outside.
This is not going to be parks anyway, though. This is not going to be out of the Parks budget.
It can be a separate line item, but if, if the electricity, electrical work is coming out of the Parks CO, so, I mean, it is parks, because we're, we're defining it as parks in order to get it under the CO, so, but we're, we're creating a line item for next year, what, whether it's parks, or whether it's lights, or maintenance, or whatever. I guess I'm just proposing, Greg, I think, to answer, that we don't do Memorial Park, that that be the part that is 13,000, that we say, let's not do that this year. The Cross Timbers Park and Memorial Park can only do City Hall, the tree, and the building. Just to piecemeal.
So in order to, for you to have an opportunity to bring it up with your Parks Board, I guess in August, or future, for future comment. So if we set a not-to-exceed budget this evening, just to let staff proceed with something for this year, then that's an acceptable approach, is that, but?
I think so, yeah. I, I think that's not a problem. I don't, I think as Doyle and Brian have said, it doesn't necessarily have to be considered parks, but we'll be considering a Parks budget, you know, on top of this, in addition to.
This will not be in the Parks budget alignment?
Right, I'm just, it, it's just like.
Okay.
Roads, yeah, there's.
We can call us, I mean, there's a number of line items that we can, we can take this from, if you wanted to, special events, whatever.
And it's a budget, you can make up a one.
You should, yes, you can. I can, I can certainly add a line item.
So what you need is a.
We need a number, not to exceed.
16,999?
That's us, right?
I make a motion not to exceed $17,000 for the Christmas lights for this coming year.
Is this including the electrical?
No.
No.
Now, this is just.
Electrical, separate.
Electrical is done.
We're dealing only with Christmas lights?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we good with 17?
Well, there's a motion.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Sean, second.
I think the only other discussion that I'd like to bring up, that we have discussed a little, is the potential, Brian, you can help me here, Tony, we could potentially be getting sponsorships that would fund into that. Like, is there a way to figure out a sponsorship program, or donations that could defray that?
Sure.
Okay, so we're not eliminating the idea that this doesn't.
No, we're not.
Right, okay.
And I'd say, as, as that becomes more of a reality, I can't imagine anybody saying, we're going to sponsor something in July, right? But as we go and we look for sponsorships, I'll come to you guys and say, okay, we've got 5,000. Do you want that on top of the 17, or you want that to be part of the 17?
Okay, that's exactly where I was coming from.
And I'll, I'll bring that to you guys.
All right.
We have a motion and a second.
May I ask, before we do that, do you want a one-year or a three-year? Are we doing a one-year or a three-year?
I want to, let's, let's go, I, I think we should go with three years, not to exceed 17, and then we'll see where we are. Is that good? Three-year contract with 17, and then we can, we can't take away, but we can add to it.
Correct.
If we get a sponsorship, we can add to it.
Correct. Do we need an amendment to the motion to add that to it?
So the motion is to approve a contract.
Three-year contract, not to exceed.
Not to exceed $1,000.
17,000 per year, not to exceed.
That's correct.
Per year, that's a second.
We have a motion.
Per year, correct.
Per year.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Greg, and a second by Sean.
I'll second that as well.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, to award bid from those received in response to requests for bid for sale of real property, R1 residential property, commonly known as 100 Block Circle Court, Lot 5, Block 3, Hillcrest Subdivision, Parker County, Willow Park, Texas, 76087, consisting of approximately 4,250 square feet, 50 by 85 of vacant land. Mr. Grimes.
Oh, Ms. Fisher's been working on this.
I'm sorry, Tony?
It's all good. Mayor and counsel, we had a request for sealed bid for sale of real property for this property, for the 100 Block Circle Court, for Lot 5, Block 2, the Hillcrest subdivision, that we set out for June 3rd, 17 to open for bids. The property has an abandoned city well on it. The independent appraisal value was $9,000, and bids were accepted for a minimum of $2,000. We received only one bid from Shelley Johnson, who is the adjacent property owner, at the bid of $2,500.
This is that small piece of land over by?
It's by a cross chapel. There's the water tower, and it's by.
Rose, can you put that picture up, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Didn't know you had that right yet. There you go.
Okay. And we have one bid, and that's all we got.
That's correct. And that's the adjacent property owner that would, is actually has that notch out, so it's where off their property.
Okay. We have a, good, do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Shelley Johnson in the amount of $2,500 for the purchase of R1 residential property, commonly known as 100 Block Circle Court, Lot 5, Block 3, Hillcrest Subdivision, Parker County, Willow Park, Texas, 76087.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number six, discussion action to approve a proposal from Franklin Legal Publishing for Codification Services. Mr. Grimes.
Franklin Legal has been doing our codification for a number of years, at least before I got here. When people go to look at our ordinances, they actually go to their website, and then they see our ordinances on their website. This is to upgrade or update those codifications. Staff memo says it hasn't been done since 2019. We have the list of costs in here, some packet, last page.
12,900.
12,900?
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
And it's, that was to recodify the entire thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry, 12,395. So 12,395.
And that was for him to, his suggestion was to completely redo the entire thing, because we had not codified in so long. Okay.
We had a, we had a couple of, of, the, the information he got initially, and the information that was published, were conflicting with each other. This is back in, I know we didn't, we codified nineteen, but the original one was done, I think, what, fifteen or sixteen? And, and this is basically to clean up everything.
My question would be, what's the process of each, almost every meeting? We potentially pass ordinances that, what's the process? Is it every six months that goes to Franklin? Is it every month after a council meeting?
It should be, it depends on how large your city is, and how often you were passing ordinances.
Okay.
More specifically, codes of ordinances, every quarter. I, I would say that, that, I almost said Hunter's Creek. It's Willow Park. It's good to do it every quarter. I think we should be codifying every quarter. You could do every six months, but the way the city is growing and multiplying, I think it is in the best interest for the city to do it every quarter.
If more frequent, it's more costly, or just more work?
It, it keeps it more up to date. It, what happens is, is that we've made so many changes, especially so many zoning changes, so when, when developers come in, and they go into our, our, our website, with the information that's in our website is not up to date, it's not the correct information. So, I think it's, it's really important, Brian, I mean, I feel.
I don't think, I think the fee's built in, no matter if you do it every quarter, every six months.
Okay.
So that fee's going to.
But every two weeks isn't appropriate?
No.
Is this, is this an annual fee?
The twelve thousand?
No, this is, this is the one-time fee. We really do think that it was going to come in like a thirty or forty thousand, to, because his suggestion was to completely redo the entire thing, and we were all pleasantly surprised. I was actually at my seminar a couple of weeks ago, and we were discussing this, because he was there, and he sent it to me while I was there. And I was like, oh, yeah, I was like, we can do this. So this will actually be split up into this budget season and, and next. So we won't take the hit for the whole twelve grid.
But the, and the annual maintenance fee's twelve hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
Question.
Sure.
What was the 2019 cost? Do we know?
No.
Okay. I, I, I use it. The one suggestion I have that we could try to bring to them would be is, whenever you're trying to print something, doesn't print that great, whenever you're trying to select it and print. So if that's something that we could potentially, since they're redoing the whole thing, have them look at, that'd be.
Did they, is this recent that you were using it? Because I know that they just got it acquired by a larger company, they're still Franklin, but they're.
I think I was printing four to six months ago, off there, quite a few, so.
I'll pass that on the curve.
Okay, thanks. And is there a way where, you know, whenever we do have somebody enter into it, where we can note on there that the ordinances get updated every quarter? So that way, whenever they're looking at it, they would know that it's updated up until certain time?
It should have on there a.
It's for reference purposes?
Right.
Yeah, it should have on there for.
Or have.
It'll, it should be on their latest supplements, you know?
Okay, that, yeah.
And so you would know that, okay, this is the latest supplement that they've just done.
Along that, because I had shared that same problem as Eric, and it would be helpful if we had on our website that we maintain a running list. When I say every two weeks, I mean, we are passing ordinances, at least once a month sometimes, changing our impact fees or whatever, but having a list of, these have been, so if you go to Franklin, you go, and all you have to go is one spot on the Willow Park website that says, these are ordinances that were passed, you'll need to.
That are, that have not been codified.
That have not been, so it's easy for someone to know, I'm looking at a zoning ordinance, let me check there to see if it was updated in the last, and then just.
He did say this takes about six, eight months. The initial startup is the seventeen hundred dollars to get it going upon signature. He did say six, eight months, saying that everything was smoothly. So I said, okay, so you're saying here? And he says, yeah, we're, we're looking at here, before it's, it's done. So, and of course, naturally, we're going to be adding to that within the next year. Because I know that we're working on redoing the zoning, which is about to be suspended.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the proposal from Franklin Legal Publishing for codification services.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Any council comments?
Are we going to discuss the next agenda?
Yes.
So my only comment would be this, on that I'll just make, is that I think I discussed this with Brian, that we're doing a budget workshop?
Yes.
So I, I think it would be best if any, I'm saying this because Doyle won't be here and I will. If any council members have any, any things that they want to see presented, just let Brian know. We don't have to say it tonight, but just give him a heads up, because if you don't call it out and ask for it, he may not go into any detail or have that particular staff member present. So just let him know, so that, so that he knows not to go into thirty minutes discussion on interest rates.
Are you going to have a workshop at six o'clock?
The workshop will be at six PM.
So I did talk to Pat about that issue. Pat, Pat's suggestion, and I, and I agree, is, we started, we start the council meeting at six, with the workshop starting at six o'clock. If we go long, we don't have to worry about an hour. If we go short, we can continue on with the council meeting as, as planned. That may not be, that's kind of abnormal, but if we, if the count, if the workshop's thirty minutes, we're going to sit here for thirty minutes, twirling our thumbs till seven, so.
I agree.
Okay. Anyone else?
And we don't need to make a, there's, we've already put this in minutes, and, and set these, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth date for six PM, so we don't need to do anything for that. Because we've already done that. We did it at the May tenth meeting.
So the two meetings in July will be at six PM?
Yes, and we, those were stated in the May tenth meeting.
Okay. Eric.
I was going to say is, is I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July holiday, and just want to make sure everybody's aware that we do have a firework ban in the city of Willow Park, so please follow the rules.
Thank you, counsel, for your work.
Sean, do you have something?
I was going to say, now we have a municipal judge to handle those tickets for the fireworks, so this will.
Can you make a citizen's arrest? Thank you, counsel, for your work, your time, and good meeting tonight. Thank you for your help with the Christmas display, or Christmas lights, and I will miss you all in July.
Enjoy your trip.
Wish you were here. Anything else?
Couple of just dates, I'll put this out later, we'll do this through the newsletter. Budget workshop is July the twelfth. I'll have a preliminary budget filed with the City Secretary on July the eighth, not that Saturday, but that Friday. We will have a tax rate, it'll be on the agenda for July the twenty-sixth. That's one day after I get certified values from the CAD, so that's going to be a quick turnaround on that issue. I'll go into that in the budget workshop. And right now, we are scheduled to adopt the budget and the tax rate on August the ninth.
Very good. Anything else?
I need everybody here on August the ninth.
We will be here. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.